Father, we thank you for praising to this day. We thank you, Father, for your love and your grace and your mercy. Father, we thank you for Jesus Christ and the life that you paid on Calvary. Again, Father, we just ask you now to help us and be with us and guide us and the seasons we make. Father, we want to do what's right for the town. We want to do what's pleasing for you. In Jesus' name.
Please remain standing in celebration to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the revival for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any amendments to the agenda? No amendments to the agenda? I hear a motion for the federal amendment set presented by the public hearing in record meeting from September 30, 2014.
Fourth to me.
For second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I propose a pass. I hear a motion for the federal amendment. You might have to say it. September 2014. I have a motion.
So moved.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay. Maryville, I'm in. Okay. We're out of view here. November the 4th, BCAA, out of the red. There are some voters over there on that table. Chief, would you hand those down, please? This is a message. It's one time everybody gets taxes every year if you're over $100,000 on your property, house, or... And they're proposing to raise $240,000 for a period of 10 years. We gave you, whether you're 2014 and then you're 2023. You'll see on the left-hand side of our services, how passes or millions would affect your personal taxes if your home and land with homestead exemption has worked $100,000. You would pay $2.50. That's the only taxes to send out to the sheriff's office. So if anything under $100,000, your homestead exemption takes care of that. So $125,000, $500,000, $150,000, $750,000, $200,000, $1250,000. This covers a lot of areas, this BCAA. Your food boxes that are distributed out to the people here in Maryville. Do you remember how many we have altogether? It's about a few. I can't remember exactly what number that is. And the next one is, I believe, November the 21st. I've been thinking last week in the red on this. But they also, if you come to them and if they would come out and help people that fit in this category with some help with your house as far as insulation, you know, fans, air conditioning, stuff like that. Ms. Winky Branch is the president of this association. But this is not asking very much. It's being very beneficial for BCAA for us to vote yes on November the 4th, because that's a Tuesday for election coming up next month. The Maryville Historical Society has a book for sale, Running the River. I have read it. It's an interesting book about the Zapping River. I think it's $16. See why you remember the historical...
It's $16.
Yeah, $16. You read it?
No.
It's been a book. Who wrote it? I don't even remember. Andrew.
I can't even stop there. It's West Park.
Yeah. I like it.
Yeah, it's West Park.
Traveling the Zapping River, the people they run into. It's an interesting book. Any and all water leaks that you see out traveling around in our city limits. Now, this is not in your house, like you've got a leak you come out or a lavatory leak. That's not what I'm talking about. If you see a water line that's got water coming to the top of the ground, please report it. I've had several people let me know about it, and Mr. Fred Walker and Anthony and Charlie, they've come out and fixed it. It really helps the town as far as electrical power. I know we've got old lines and their water leaks all the time, but any of these water leaks that you may see, please report them so we can get those fixed.
Did they fix that one?
Well, Tim, they fixed it Friday morning. From a top to the postmaster, everybody knows that there's a, I guess it's broken concrete where the cove is at if you're coming out of the post office on the south inside. He's told me that that's contracted out to an individual company, and they have to notify them, and they've been notified to fix that. Now, when it's going to get fixed, I can't tell you. That's what the town has nothing to do with the post office down there. It's a federal agency, but the agency contracts it out to an individual company to make payment. November the 8th, flowers over there, too. There will be veterans today at the Bandit Life Center, here at First Methodist Church in Maryville, at 10 o'clock that morning, Saturday morning. Mr. David Tanner, World War II veteran from Suffolk, will be a main guest speaker. We'll have a laundry guard there. There will be food provided there. It's a great time. We have senior room. I think it's going to be a great deal. And there will be door prices there that day, too.
There'll be music.
Sir.
There'll be music.
Yeah, there'll be music there, too. Mr. Whitaker is here tonight. He gives history to the others. There'll be music there for that. And Stephen Finer is a male. I think he got both. I'm looking for a good many veterans to come out to that November day. November the 3rd, First Pentecost Church. I should've got more of these back for lunch and help at the schoolhouse from November the 3rd through November the 7th at night. At 7:00 PM, the high school auditorium. And there will be a guest speaker each night. I'll leave this up here. You want to come by and look at it afterwards. 100-year anniversary for the Pentecost Church. And there will be meals there each night after we go to the table about that. The director, Mr. Lawrence Wilford. Lawrence, what's his name? Wilford. He had a talk today about the transit.
Oh, Luxon.
Luxon. Wilford Luxon, right? That right? Mr. Wilford Luxon. He's a driver for this transit thing. There's a bulletin board in there. He gave a very good presentation about this today, and there's prices charged on here. But anyone that needs this transportation, has Medicare or Medicaid, they will pay for it, for the cost of going to the doctor or going to the drugstore. Isn't that correct?
Well, if you're on a doctor's order.
Doctor's order.
Or a doctor's ordered prescription.
Right. That is, they will pay for it.
Right.
So one of these is on the bulletin board out there. I'll leave this one up here. You got any more questions about that, I'll try to answer them for you. Movie night will be October 31st down here at the Pavilion. Ghostbusters is the title of the movie. November the 10th, I told that veterans program will be up here at Maryville High School. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
November the 10th at 2:00 PM.
2:00.
2:00 PM. And on November the 29th, it'll be a book day at the community center. And I think I've covered all Marys. Y'all probably heard me.
The church starts a revival this Sunday.
Starts a revival this Sunday. What's the time on that?
It'll be 7:00.
6:00 on Sunday night, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday night will be at 7:00.
Okay.
We'll have road shooters up around, too.
Okay. Very good.
And then also, First Methodist Church is having a showing of the movie God is Not Dead at, it'd be about 1:00 Sunday afternoon.
I forgot that one.
We're going to show it in the fellowship hall there. First Methodist Church, anybody who wants to come is free of charge, and this movie is well worth seeing.
That's just coming Sunday, right?
That's Sunday afternoon. It was 1:00, 1:30.
1:00, 1:30, okay.
That's what the 19? Is that somewhere?
Yep.
19, right.
But anyway, if you get a chance, you can come by there and watch it for this weekend. That's at the Methodist Church this Sunday coming up. Is anybody under old business? I have none on here. But we'll move on to deeper business. Item number one, a resolution to the Bull Guard Parish Police Jury requesting assistance installing coves at Mud Park location, Highway 110 West. This is over off of Weaver Street, like more than a thousand, bro. We have our coves now, so we'll be sending a resolution to the police jury to install those over there. And I have a motion.
Make a motion. We approve the resolution.
I have a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number two down here, we had discussion, what you had brought up last month, discussion citation or court costs. Mr. Wildwood has requested that we postpone this because there's different costs involved with court costs. So I'd like to have a motion from you to table this to next month, so Mr. Wildwood will have a chance to look at the different types of court costs.
Well, I make a motion. You guys will table this?
Okay.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay. Chief Staley is number three here on power shift, and I'll turn that over to him.
Well, I want to do is start up a power shift for the full-time officers. Give them a chance to get a little bit of overtime on the weekends. The hours would be 6:00 to 2:00 Friday and Saturday night. The reserves would also be able to work it if a full-time officer didn't want to work their weekend off. I wouldn't be able to do it, so it'd just be the three guys that I have full-time in my overtime exempt. The thefts have been picking up here lately. We've had Mr. Whitaker's house got broken, well, his shit got broken, too. Another trailer stolen off of train road, and a firearm stolen out of the ports. I think we beef up the patrol a little bit. It would help the city because that was maybe crime around Maryville. Now, this would be overtime, but we pay them. I talked to Jennifer. She said I have it in my budget to do it one day, but we could rearrange the contract labor for the budget to do the rest of it.
How many people do you have over there on reserve?
I have a total of four.
Now, you're talking about using your regular officer, flawed regular officer versus the...
Well, give the full-time guys a chance to get some overtime. We don't have any kind of details, special details we can learn. The housing authority got cut back on their budget, so they cut out the security there. They kind of helped the guy, and that was a little weird, my money. Give them a chance to get some overtime. I am plus helping the town and writing the citations and following our town.
You thought what time?
6:00 to 2:00 tomorrow.
Then these officers, first of all, you're already short one person, so you got a shift. And then we're going to put these other officers holding even more hours than what they are, because that was one of your speeches before, that, you know, to have more time. And, you know, it was working down.
I've spoken to all the officers. They all agreed to do it. They voted to do it. Give them a chance to make overtime.
We could set up something like neighborhood watch, going around, having the officer go around informing people that each half is that we can cover to catch on the informant that we're having a little bit of theft going on. I understand most of it's coming from vehicles or boats or something that probably left guns up here and making them aware of it.
A neighborhood watch program would be fine with that. If half of Maryville is asleep at 8:00, you know, even if you still got the rest of the town, there ain't nobody watching, everybody asleep. I understand from 2:00 to 5:00 o'clock on to 5:00 the next day, there won't be anybody out there patrolling, but the full-time officers. But this would beef up the patrol a little bit and give us a chance to write more citations, patrol more around town. Now, you got one guy on the road doing answering calls, and you have one guy patrolling.
Well, I know for sure right now we got a vehicle problem. And then if we're going to beef up the patrol, we've got a vehicle problem.
Well, the vehicle would be a big vehicle. The vehicle would be, we have three vehicles, and there's only going to be two officers working at a time.
You said if the contract labor that's in the budget will pay for one shift?
Yes.
So what's going to pay for the rest of it?
My full-time officer, I thought I had you said.
No, what it is is you have the money in your contract labor to pay like overtime for one shift.
Okay.
But it wasn't enough to cover like the two shifts.
All right. Well, I had to knock it down to one day.
For one day.
But I'm happy with that one.
What about the sheriff's department? Y'all contact them, see what they can provide us some restrictions?
They're more than happy to help us with the thefts that have happened, but as far as sending the guy down here and patrolling, that's not, not any time soon. I've talked to Sheriff Rick Martin, and they said it's in the works. They're trying to get a substation put down here, but it's not happening.
How do you get along with the chief of the river? I mean, the high sheriff, how you get along with it?
We get along.
Well, you know, you're young, you're getting in, need to get in contact, and by the time you need help, he'll get you.
Yeah, he didn't tell me he'd give you help with cases that already exist, that already happened, people that got their stuff stolen. That's far as done, but I'm talking about as far as patrolling, trying to do like a crime prevention, trying to prevent the crime from happening.
Well, we certainly want to have the security of the town. People like to go to bed at night and not be overly concerned about somebody ripping, ripping things off. What about, since we got good people with things switched around, what about your traffic tickets and things are rolling? Has there been any improvement on that?
There's a lot of improvement there.
What kind of improvement?
We went from writing 40 something tickets a month to writing 78 a month.
Wow. That's what I had to say within some time. I'll leave the other boards to come up with what they think.
One over by two. You're going to make that mistake. I'm sure that's according to what you're saying.
What about shortening the hour in two days?
It wouldn't be any good, shorten the hour. 6:00 to 2:00, that's only, what, eight hours? Eight hours?
Yeah, it's eight hours. Like do 10 to 2, and, you know, just cover the late nights. That's what you're going to have.
That would even be worth this time. If they work both nights, so.
Would you stagger the day, not say, what will be on Friday night? Could you change it? I would not let it be.
What means there is a Sunday night?
Just don't let the people know which night it's going to be going down.
If you kept record on these things that have been coming up, missing things, if you kept record on what days they're happening on, what locations, and what, what days and office locations, is that what they are?
You don't have it on an area map.
Okay. I know what they're doing, they go out in the area.
I don't have it on the map.
You don't have.
There's a certain high crime rate. Such as crack dealers coming down. Where they come down.
I don't want to.
Simple short, one person on the waste department. So that one person you're not paying, what's that mean?
What we call the K order pay.
No, we're not. We are.
That was the reason.
We are.
Now that they got more traffic type, they can afford it.
That money, you know, we can't afford to pay that fifth person. We used to have that fifth person.
But then we redid the budget. I think we re-budgeted it for five. We presented it for four.
Which we have, right?
County Chief of Police would do that, Captain.
So the money that they bring in for the tickets goes, has been to the general park.
To the general park.
It's figured into his budget, basically.
Well, if the citations is doubled, I would think that somewhere along the time, there could be a dip or two more coming in.
What it is is, most of the tickets get collected, but we do have to send tickets into the state each month. Usually what happens is, is the ones who actually are going to pay it, once they get that letter from the state, they'll call and say, oh, I forgot to pay my ticket, and they don't pay it. The ones that aren't going to pay it are going to wait until the driver's license come back up and have no choice but to pay it.
So when they write the ticket, they bring it to y'all, and y'all hold it and wait for that person to come in and pay it, or y'all automatically send it to the state?
We have to wait, wait until I have the court date from them to come in and pay it.
Okay. And if they don't pay it, it just goes to the state? There's no extra step going, court dates coming on? There's no, so nobody takes the extra step to get this money? We just wait till they get the driver's license through you?
The...
Fix something up on four years?
If they're not going to, if they're not going to pay it with the state, then they're more than likely not going to pay it, police and them will. All we would be doing would be...
David, you indicated crack ads, like you felt, I'd make a crack ads for doing the stealing, which may very well be crack. How many drug busts or anything y'all made? Did y'all make any drug busts lately?
I've had three.
If the people sign citations and they're bringing more money in, it should just be paid for their shifts, their salaries, and their pay.
DUI. And then I had another one which was involved in the theft.
Well, that is, like you run a mail, or is there ever a time we didn't have anybody working for them?
Was there any time that we don't have it?
Right.
No.
Well, then, why do you owe them? I mean, I'm missing something here. If we've got enough officers that we have, officer on duty at all times, I don't understand why we need to start working overtime.
It gives, we don't hardly make anything. I make $100 a week.
So this don't deal with for y'all to make more money?
No, this crime prevention, and it tells the officer that. I mean, our reserves don't come in enough. We have four reserves, and they come in, they only, they have to come in 20 hours a
I understand a lot of bigger towns that police officers go to work, like Walmart, doing things like that.
We have no detail.
Which we don't have here.
We're basic. We make our salary, and that's it.
Well, when the police officer hired, what you hired up to do?
I mean, you did what you were going to make when you took the job.
It would help out. I mean, it'd help the guys out. I mean, if not, they're going to start going to other places. That's just going to end up bad. I mean, they're getting that experience they need, they're getting back on the road. They're going to end up leaving. I mean, we don't have insurance, we don't have benefits, we don't have none of this stuff. All I'm asking for is a little bit of overtime. They have the town out, they write tickets, crime prevention. All it is is $15 an hour, two days in a week.
Well, one thing I can say is, being a resident of Maryville, I'd like to know that the town and state had a little bit of hobbage to the police department that the old way that I don't know if they'll say it's for us to give overtime, but same token, we have to find out. We got to find out a solution.
We're still where we were, correct?
Where we could possibly help narrow this your crime prevention down some way or another. Understand that, or we got something building up that hadn't been helping, helping before. All of a sudden, we got crowned out there, and pleading and stuff, that we certainly need to figure out something or other, to do something about it. We owe it as council members, and we owe it to the town. Whatever the solution is. David, what's your opinion?
It's that Charles decision, Mike.
Well, if they're out there, they're going to write more tickets. So that would bring a little bit more in.
You double wash your shift, you're going to have more drivers, more citations, a lot more patrol around.
Let me ask you, in any way we could do this on a trial basis? If it doesn't do that, we're okay?
I'd agree with you. Because we could get a trial, and if it seems to be working.
If it's bad for itself.
The point is, I would, you know, I'd like to know the last month that we made, did we have five burglaries or 10 burglaries? I would have something to compare about the next month, you know, if we had a drop in that or something. Sounds like me, like some young people going around vehicles and things, getting things out of them and out of boats and things, or getting rotten rails off people's front porch, you know, so they can't go fishing. But, but, you know, nobody has anything stolen from the place. I know, and I'm sure nobody else does.
And were they stolen out of that truck?
Yeah, they understand they stole the gun.
I'd be scared if I knew.
So my needs, so I think we've got guns floating around out there that shouldn't be floating around. Somebody steals a gun, I would think they got, I think they got something in there.
I'm hoping they went and pumped it, not kept a tease at first.
I think the best thing to do is to go spend the money. Go to a lady at Hound, like couldn't afford this. So I'm going to meet my tar, we spend money, spend money, spend money. We got, it wasn't Saturday days, he going on with the hell of money. We got to, we couldn't buy a toilet tissue.
So would you help contact the sheriff?
Yes, I would. He will help with the existing cases, but as far as sending a man down here and patrolling, it's not happening. Not any time soon. And that's, that's his exact part.
Well, unless anybody else has anything to say, or I make a motion, David, that we institute this on the 30-day trial program.
I surrender.
Everybody on the council understand the motion?
Motion was the 30-day trial basis.
And hopefully at the next meeting, maybe show us.
We give you 30-day trial basis.
If you can show us a result or see if it will pay for itself.
So basically, at least number meeting, or number meetings, bring it back up?
Yeah, maybe we can do this. Would that be all, I believe, if it's going to work?
30 days, yeah. When you do the November meeting, that would be my rate.
Would that, would that give you a chance to see if you can make it pay?
Yes. Yeah, because I'm not worried also about, I'm burning it, burning out the officers.
Yeah.
Well, I know that...
All your other officers, they put in these extra hours. working here and there and everything, trying to, trying to support the families, trying to understand that.
So you're talking one night?
Yeah, we can do one night, if they're on the arm of the murder.
Well, that's all, that's all we question.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be a five night or a Saturday night.
Yeah.
I think they wanted him to kind of not...